Yeah.
I said nothing to everybody.
Yeah.
We force like we force our way.
I think we could sit here.
Oh, yeah. Is there kind of them?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you send it to Diane? But I mean, we're trying when we heard about the fact that we have to. This is such a category. We told my. That's why we need to say, hey, you don't even know what.
Sounds good.
Please be the trash.
Yeah, they insisted that he changed it.
I want to be back.
Wow.
You know, if you need. I want to be on. Coleman needs. We can't build. I mean.
You got. Yeah. They are. So we have about. It's like about half an acre of Buchanan.
We can't count the money here, but we think we live.
Okay.
A one. More than like.
Yes.
Excuse me.
No. What we spend doesn't. Yes, so no, it's just a we do it as.
This is for a four block.
You're welcome. Yeah, did too hard.
How are you doing? I'm good. How are you doing? I'm taking.
Do you know how many? Superb lot.
I read it online. When did you put, um, letter of money on the zoning board with Q?
I don't remember. Okay, sounds good.
I don't, I'm not gonna mail you.
Uh huh. It's how the city commissioners are gonna be able to alter. Yeah. Well, you know. Really? Yeah, why didn't you call? I know, right?
It wasn't you that was calling out. That's what you guys. It's just like Jill.
Well.
Well, I would like to. I don't know if we have to update. I mean, we got their repastor.
I know, trust me.
Well, what do we do? I eliminated two. And you dumped me. So I'm sorry to remind you of this. I got rid of two in three months. I rid of the stinking duck farm. I go to five year management.
Didn't the waitress tell you I was sitting next to her? Your neighbors?
Yep.
I went to that, I went to that blossom type thing.
Oh, yeah.
And I sat down. She's, she's, she's a, she's a lovely girl. I mean, she's very.
Very bad.
She's very.
And I lived next to her. Putting all this bit.
I sat down next to her dad. He said, I don't. I wrench. I said, where are you? And he said. Wanna get this. This is a project. They are really done this.
Yeah. So. You guys can hit those out there and let me know. I'll get them. I mean, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have one of these? Yeah, 'cause this is the basis for everything. So, but in, you talk about zone, worry about this.
Look at your shoes. I love that.
My friend.
See you later. Yeah, it's how we watch each other.
Yeah.
Well, you, there was one seat. You guys can.
I'll move so you can sit next to her. Why don't you guys stay together? If you two can make. As a group.
Um, I do.
I can't stay though.
My name's Adam.
Back there, anyone? Why just ask Sean? I should be that guy. Why does he go? Publicly fracturing. I'd be willing to take fifty whiffs.
Make a little bad.
Turn around and laugh at you. I'm not gonna.
I don't wanna know what you're talking about.
I'm not gonna go away till I'm dead.
Got me in for the first one, bud.
Oh, yeah. I need to return the email.
Absolutely. Seriously. Oh, okay, yeah. I think you.
Who should treasure?
You made the trade.
The bar.
Oh, oh, no, there are some.
Actually, actually said her email has been blown out by like thirteen people. Wanting to know why we're not in here. That's what she said. It was an oversight. And she couldn't be on there. I would be in that. And I got a little nervous.
We weren't in there either. No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Simon wants us all to vote for it, so there you go. Where was I against her?
People make mistakes every day. I still need to. No.
We used to not make. They take out index. How, why isn't it make mistakes? You're welcome.
We're expected to do fifty times more per day. Right. Involving.
Don't pay eight dollars a day.
Not high, right?
What do you call it?
There's no need for it.
I was gonna say, maybe. You're one shot. It's supposed to make two percent. Well, you have the right. Well, I'll give it over. Yeah.
So you can't figure barbiton?
You'd see if you. If it's a major.
I do believe that that wasn't. Some kind of joke. I know it's a note, but I don't know how. Okay, what abouts?
But can.
Because like you said, it's like a sweet, sweet, really quick, what?
Funny story about how Facebook blows things up.
But they said it's been in the works.
Apparently yesterday on Facebook. It went crazy about the high school sign. Someone changed the message on the old high school sign. And it said, congrats, I support you. And they spoke, congratulations. So it blew up on Facebook how stupid the people that worked in high school were. It smelled right. And it got, it just went downhill from there, okay? So this morning, when we removed the old sign, Brian proved out the picture. And he said, we're listening to the community. Because, and because, because you didn't like the sign, we've removed. So this gentleman drives up today and starts screaming at my guys that are working there. Saying, I cannot believe you're removing that sign because something was felt like that. At least like wood. And the guys were like, that's a good joke. Was putting in the.
Also, they're. Scholars.
Working or what's going on?
And that was just probably an hour ago.
Is the sign up? No, the old one's gone.
Oh, the old one's gone.
I get a horse.
Yeah, that would've been fast.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna tie into what's there. Because what's there was actually a really nice foundation. I'm just gonna tie into it with some rock and. So they can, we need around with that sign, so. Is Mark coming?
He said he wants, but I haven't heard any more so.
Wait, you all said your order? I say, let's get started.
Sounds cool.
All right. Let's get started.
All right.
Okay, so can I give a brief introduction while we're here?
Yeah.
So, Rich Burkey, Community Development Director. For the first several months of twenty twenty-one, we worked with Andrews University and Professor Andrew Lamar, who's here on engaging the city of Buchanan on reimagining what could be. In particularly in two sections of town, one in the downtown and one on the north side. There was a really robust community engagement. Lots of meetings and lots of discussions about what could be in Buchanan. And this process moved forward. The students and Andrew kind of lived with us for several months and began capturing this vision, this community vision. And we built consensus and we presented it to the community and we promised that we would be. Begin implementation right away, which we have on several items from the vision. Along the way, we had observed that our zoning code was about twenty years old and it has served its useful lifetime. And we saw an opportunity in working with Placemakers, Susan Henderson, and having Andrew as a member of a team that regularly does work around the country with communities to overhaul their zoning codes, to update their zoning codes. And we thought what a great opportunity would be to bring back Andrew with all his insight and look at how to implement a zoning code that would help facilitate the implementation of the vision. So that's why we're here. We wanted, today we met with several groups from a lot of the same groups we met with during the visioning process. We met downtown stakeholders, preservationists, north side neighborhood group. We had a city hall roundtable with all the department heads. And now we are having the joint meeting with the city commission, planning commissioner Barb. Barb, thank you so much for being here. Members of the public, thank you for being here. So I'll turn it over to Susan to kind of give an overview and then we'll kind of start our discussion.
Okay, Susan Henderson with Placemakers from Albuquerque, New Mexico. And thank you for having us. It's been delightful to be here today. And the interesting thing about your zoning code, just this little preliminary assessment, is there are many things about it that are actually quite excellent that I think should be brought forward. And that is from the time it was written, you, whoever was your author actually did a really good job in your downtown and your neighborhood commercial districts getting the setbacks, the yard sizes, building heights and all of that to reflect your historic properties. That was, that was very well done. And then in some of your other districts, it gets kind of a one size fits all, sort of a twenty-five foot standard setback, which, I mean, you're not alone. Most cities we worked did the very same thing in the mid twentieth century. It was a very common tool that was used. And like Rich mentioned, that, you know, it's, it's done very well for, but it's reached essentially an average lifespan for a zoning code. So there's some best practices that can be implemented in this. I think there are two or three strategies to look at. One is some basic simplification. You have a zoning map issue where you have a couple of residential zones and a couple of industrial zones that are all colored the same color. So it's not legally defensible. And if you are ever sued, no one would know, you know, what the zoning districts were. So, you know, there's some cleanup like that that should happen. And then there are ways in which the, this, you know, fabulous plan that we've heard nothing but good about today from all of the meetings. Interestingly, not the north side neighborhood, but the downtown is made possible. The, the vision is made possible through your existing zoning, but it's not required. So what that means is you permit good stuff, but you don't require good stuff. So. Because zoning is entitlement, essentially you've given permission to do bad stuff. You know, stuff that's not harmonious with your, with your historic character. So there are real easy fixes for a lot of this. The one tricky part is going to be the residential, because the vast majority of the city, as you know, is owned, single family residential. And yet we heard today, especially in talking to staff, that there are many properties that of your large, beautiful historic homes that have been subdivided over the years. A lot of them without permission, but they've lasted long enough that they're now legal non-conforming uses. And so the question we'll have, we'll be exploring with you is, first of all, how much of that do you actually want to legalize because it exists? You know, do you want to say, okay, this is functioning, let's just make it okay? Or do you want to pinch down on it? And if you pinch down, are you willing and able to do the code enforcement that that requires? You know, so there's a lot of those sorts of questions involved. One other thing to think about at this point in time. I mean, you all have established a really successful and very interesting business model of transforming your industri, your manufacturing economy to a growing economy, as it were, with cannabis. And so since that use is now infilling with the growing in production, you've permitted it by special use within your industrial zones. Frankly, it's a much cleaner. Without hell hazard production than a lot of the, of the manufacturing heavy industrial uses that you have permitted within your zoning ordinance. And so one question for you is, this isn't getting into Main Street or any other zone, but if you're looking just at industrial, should we consider permitting that by right? Because it's, it's an excellent industrial use. And it would avoid all of the special permit issues that you're currently having to go through. That would not change what you have to do for retail. That would still be, you know, a very rigorous public process. You know, another thing to consider at this point in looking at your ordinance, do you actually want to set, because Heather was mentioning that you're interested in cannabis not taking over Main Street. So do we start to look at percentages of properties or percentages of square footage or total number of permits? You know, there are any number of ways that can be more tightly regulated. And do you want it to be clear and predictable? Or do you want all of it to be negotiated? Because you can do either. So those are questions that especially the city commission will need to think about. And so when we come back with our first draft, that's the one for you to throw darts at. We, that's the one where we'll take our best guesses based on everything that we talked about today and all the meetings we've had. And we fully expect to have gotten a fair amount of it wronged. But so just understand that that document will be, we'll be expecting you to edit it, to make it better. And it will give you time to be thinking about all of these questions. So I guess the very first question I have for you all as, as commissioners at this workshop is, do you generally have a positive or a negative impression of how easy and understandable it is to work with your zoning code? I know a lot of that goes through planning commission, but eventually things find their way as city commission. So do you have, can you give some sort of input on, what is your relationship with your zoning code? No, that's fine.
I'm a planning commissioner. I was hoping it was going to be your.
Oh, yeah. Not gonna make it.
That was a question.
Oh, yeah. Now, the question is, what is your general, what is your general relationship with your, with your zoning code now? How much engagement does the city commission have with it? And is it generally favorable or is it generally? I'm just trying to get a feel for what you think about it.
Honestly, it goes through the planning commission first.
Right.
So we don't deal directly with our code a lot. We're usually brought recommendations based on someone else saying this is what we shouldn't do or shouldn't do based on what we've, Rich has brought us.
Yeah.
What we've looked at. So to be honest, the commission doesn't deal with our zoning code that often.
Right.
I am interested in knowing what he was saying a minute ago about just allowing the industrial just because, without having to run that through the government.
Yeah. Well, Rich first flagged this for us when he was talking about anytime he's proposed a special use permit for like a growing or production in industrial. He usually starts with the recommendation that this is a whole lot less nonchalant than most of the uses that are permitted by right. And so that raised a flag for me that if this is a lower impact use, why don't you permit it by right?
Well, and I think informally, we've told Rich that we're all for industrial. And I mean, if it brings in jobs, it's clean manufacturing, why would we say no?
Exactly.
So, I mean, yeah, that makes sense.
It would just take a lot of administrative burden off of things.
Say, you know.
Less meetings, like.
Yeah, I get it.
The general public doesn't realize how much administrative staff time goes into noticing all these meetings. For how we took one of these special permits, really takes a lot of time on the staff. If we didn't have that, we could focus in on other things and that would be really helpful. And it doesn't remove the requirement that they have to have a marijuana permit. They still have to have the underlying permit. It's just they don't need the special use zoning permit. So they don't have to have two separate permits.
They're still regulated by the state, by the statute law. If they don't, if they break our laws, we can throw them out just the way.
No, it's just a special use.
Right.
Hurdle.
Yes.
Right.
Only for industrial areas.
Correct.
Right. Right.
So that's something we could draft up and then after time and thought that, you know, you could say, no, you know, we've changed our mind. We think this needs that, that extra hurdle. But anyway, at least we can, we can act it and give you something to look at. Okay. Then what about the thought about setting an explicit cap on retail downtown? Are you interested? Do you know how much you want there to be?
We're there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think right now, and, you know, Rich would be our advisor at this. But yeah, I think we're, we're at our maximum capacity and.
So we were talking how to administer it moving forward. One option was mentioned is analyzing how much square footage there is in our downtown commercial area and comparing it to how much square footage is dedicated to cannabis. So if we went through that exercise and got that calculation, would you guys say that the current square footage usage, whatever that percentage is, maybe we set that as the percentage cap?
Yeah, I mean. With something, because right now we're working off a number of permits of what has happened, which I'm sure Rich has explained to you, is like, for instance, one on the corner down here, what had a permit and then expanded. So they're covering more square feet. But that's shop space and it's something else.
Right.
And we're just worried, you know, if someone can move into the space adjacent to them with the same permit, we're afraid that entire blocks will start giving heat, which we don't, which we don't want.
Which, that's one reason I suggested the square footage number. Maybe another equal thing is linear feet of storefront? Because that also can, would control your total area. Would that perhaps probably be easier to do?
That would be easier to master. Yeah.
So I think, I, I mean, I don't want to speak further, but I think that's it. But I think that would make it easier than, than limiting the number of permits and then having some would grow anyway. You know, grow, grow in size anyway.
Yeah, sure.
What do you, how do you, if you've got somebody that's actually, I'm sorry, maybe I was. How do you attract other businesses? I mean, it's all fine and easy to say we want other things. But then what is it we really need to do when you got the money right there? I mean, it's easy to say, yeah, revamp another building, please. So what is it you have to do to get somebody to come in without a lot of help from the city? For the city to get out of the way, to put in a restaurant or to put in, you know, any number of things that aren't there? I mean, because the complaint's gonna be marijuana, but there was absolutely nothing downtown prior to the marijuana. Now we got the foot traffic, but we lost a restaurant. We lost two restaurants, didn't we? BMW's closed. Well, we gained two restaurants, but the thing, to answer your question, we need liquor licenses. And that's what we're working on. So, you know, I mean, for a restaurant to be viable, for them to put in a million dollars, they need to have the tools to make money in the retail market. So that's why we have kind of paved this path, we believe, to the state as a redevelopment district. So I think we're addressing those concerns. We are engaging developers. We know cannabis sector also has a lot of investors in the entertainment, retail, in their circles that they talk to. So, I mean, it, I think it's just a matter of time. The BMW restaurant changed hands, but the owner has a vision to be a restaurant again, so. No, we, we did open the Sweet Shop. Sweet Shop opened, there's a small coffee shop that opened. We have hometown video under renovation. So, I mean, a lot of what we're seeing is happening in real time, but it just takes time.
More restaurants are coming. I'm part of one. And what they're doing here to clear the gap and make it easier for us to do that is what they're doing. So as, as, as a person that is putting a restaurant downtown, this is, this is awesome for us to be able to just come in and say this is up to date and it's easy for us to do it.
Thank you.
So. Sorry, I don't know who's in team.
Go ahead.
I think Yormo was trying.
How are we, the public, going to know? There's no communication. We hear that, oh, restaurant, restaurant, restaurant. And then you tell me it's going to take time. Please be honest. Talk to us.
Yeah, that's why we're having these public meetings, Yormo. Yep, we're trying. We're trying. But to your point, we always want to make sure we're communicating, so thank you.
Another issue associated with downtown. You all have done a fabulous job at, you know, providing some large parking lots off the street. And we understand, I haven't been down there this afternoon, but I understand afternoons and evenings you have pretty high parking demand. However, I would suggest one thing to think about, and that is filled parking spaces are indicators of successful economic development. And so it means you've done something right. And the one issue that we normally recommend is that when you're dealing with historic structures, not new build, but your historic Main Street buildings that you're trying to preserve, that you don't require a change of use, like for example with the new restaurant, triggering a recalculation of onsite parking. For the simple reason that all of those historic properties pretty much fill up their lots and they don't have any room to acquire more parking spaces, which means they'll sit there empty. And so it wouldn't adjust your overall parking requirements, but it would give, it would give alleviation of that burden for historic.
As a requirement.
Yeah, right. Yeah, just making sure it's gonna take.
I mean, I think our, our parking in general needs an overhaul. And people complain about our parking all the time, but I don't think it's a problem. People aren't coming to Buchanan to park. They're coming for something else. And if they, if they want to come for something else bad, they'll park no more.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we need to figure out. So, I mean, we need to figure out our parking, but I don't see this as a huge issue.
Right. Okay, then another issue that came up quite a bit today was housing and the fact that, you know, things are starting to go really well in your city. You've gotten a good reputation, you're the friendliest city in the United States, which is a fabulous reputation. And housing is becoming tight. And we heard even some of your staff this afternoon talking about trying to move into town, having a difficult time. So one solution to that, that doesn't change the character of the city, it doesn't change the intensity, is to permit granny flats. So what that means, of course, is that if you have a garage in back, you can put a small apartment upstairs. Or you can just build a, a small flat in your backyard. And as I mentioned at earlier meeting, we've seen a real, the pandemic made a big shift in how we handle housing, largely because of so many deaths in nursing homes and assisted living, you know, congregate living places, that a lot of people were bringing their aging parents home, but they had no place to house them for accessibility and whatnot. So if you permit accessory dwelling units, you're providing solutions for, you know, young independent kids and for aging seniors. The, the way to make it work is to require the owner, the landowner, to live on site. Because then they become the de facto code enforcer and they keep down noise and they keep down, you know, they maintain.
Outkeep.
Outkeep, yeah, garbage, et cetera. So, just curious if you would be open to that idea?
I think we need to do something. I mean, I heard Courtney talking about looking for a home here and she's a poster child. I mean, there's so many people like her that I, I've heard that same thing. I mean, our homes are either four hundred thousand or twenty-five thousand. And there's nothing in the, for somebody who's either just starting out or retired. So we have to find something in that middle ground. I think this is one option, I'm not sure if that's the answer to everything, but I think.
Yeah, with the different programs that, you know, that are afforded to Buchanan, in my opinion, you know, we've had an influx of a lot of people and, and actually, I guess we call it affordable housing is, is kind of being taken up. And, you know, we need to look at some alternatives. I know that we, we've discussed the Andrews University, you know, project, talked about doing some different things on some of these areas that we have. But, you know, yeah, we have to find some kind of alternate programs, you know, to bring these younger people, Courtney, like the mayor said, for example. There are people that wanna come to town because of the different programs, you know, the promise program and the school system, that, those kind of things.
We have this infrastructure, everybody wants to come to Buchanan, no one can find a place to live.
Right.
And that's a problem we have to solve.
So there's, there's a couple of potential solutions, solutions to that. One is, and, and I gathered in the meeting earlier, there's mixed feelings about this, but one is the possibility of saying, okay, these large old houses have been subdivided already into more than one unit, is that okay?
Well, you touched on something too, a minute ago, that I think is really important with this conversation, and that is keeping the character of this, the Norman Rockwell small town thing. I mean, people wanna see Buchanan change, they wanna see it get better, but they don't wanna see it change.
Right.
And so I think that's a really fine line we have to walk when we're talking about what kind of affordable homes we're going to build, what they're gonna look like, how they're gonna be presented.
Right.
I think, I mean, that, I think that's at the top of the list. I think that's a priority when it comes to that, is how do we do that in a way that doesn't change the character of our town?
So.
And then so, and I'm sorry, but I, so I think splitting up old homes into apartments, I don't see that as a problem. I think that's a good thing, actually. I mean, otherwise they might sit empty if someone can't afford to live in it by themselves or. So I think that's a really viable option.
And we've done that a little bit with the downtown district, you know, some of those. By, by making some of them that sat idle for a good number of years, you know?
Right.
We've done that.
Yeah, and you guys have a really good, really good zoning in your neighborhood commercial and your downtown for permitting residential upstairs. So you've already got that and it's a form of multifamily. So the other thing is Andrew's students did in, in that illustration, second from the last.
The cottages.
The cottages. So we could, we could build that sort of zoning district too.
I, I think that would be supported, honestly. I think that would be supported more than anything that's perceived to be more modern or metro or, I just, I don't see that far.
Yeah. So what do you think about townhouses?
I think that's where they're gonna be.
Yeah. Cause you don't have any.
No, we don't. I think if you just plonk them somewhere where no one uses to see them, it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. So I think we have to be very careful about how we plan where they will go.
Okay.
Sorry, that.
Townhouses, yeah. Okay, so then here's a thought too. In your neighborhood commercial, you have very little multifamily right now and what you had built in the sixties and seventies frankly is aging out and is not very attractive. You also, but there's not a lot of it zoned that way. And I know Rich is concerned that it, what is still undeveloped could be developed poorly. And then you have a really good neighborhood commercial that permits residential above, but it's, there's not a lot of it that's mapped, very little mapped. So in the interest of simplification, we could merge those two zoning districts. We could reduce the capacity, make it very clear and predictable what the multifamily would be like, so it's not that big stuff. Essentially, we would archive that existing district, which means it would stay legally intact, so it wouldn't make those non-conforming lines, but it would not be available for new use. You know, something wasn't already developed. And then you would have this nice neighborhood center blended density mixed use district that could fill in, you know, some of these undeveloped parcels around town that would give you a good mixed use option. And then the market could drive it, cause I understand it seems like you guys are seriously about options. Any, any, does any of that make you nervous? Any discomfort?
It doesn't make me nervous. I mean, I, I'm open to any options. I, we, because we have to do something. I feel like we have to do something. We have a lot of people that wanna live here and there's nowhere to live. And so I think, I don't think any options off the table necessarily, if it's presented in, in the correct way.
So like to be able to visualize that, what it would look like is if it's, if it, you could have units above shops without, you know, a whole lot of requirements except building height. But if you did make a multifamily a standalone project, then it would be very much like the Andrews plan, you know, where it includes, it could include a range of building types, but they're all the right scale.
Right. And I think that, I think like Sean mentioned before, that's important in this town.
Yeah, right.
And in my opinion, that's very important in this town. Because the people just don't wanna see that, you know, grandeur, housing type thing. They wanna see that.
They don't wanna see like a two hundred and fifty unit high density complex. I mean, is that, is that, because that's something I'm not done well, that concerns me. So, and, you know, the, the market's gonna tell, there are certain developers that say, that's all I can build.
Yeah, right.
And that's, I think we gotta hold out for better.
Exactly. Andrew, you first, you kinda put that into the play, in my opinion.
There's a, there's an organization, they're, they're national now, but they have a big group based out of Detroit in central Michigan. And they're called the Incremental Development Alliance. And they come into communities, they're a nonprofit, and they train potential local residents how to do small scale development, because it's not the kind of work that the big guys do, you know? And, and they do, they just tell you, we don't do that, you know? And so these guys are about grassroots developers, because there's good money in it. You know, there's a good profit margin if you know how to do it right. And so, you know, if you're interested, Heather, I can give you their info.
Is that the group that lives in Detroit and works, they, where the ball fields and stuff are, I can't think of the name of the.
No, that's a developer, but yeah, that, that was a big project, yeah. That's.
Go ahead, Larry.
They weren't, they, this.
This is different, this is a nonprofit.
Okay.
That just trained people.
Because they worked outside that, no?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's.
Yeah, they did a lot of that small scale neighborhood stuff, yeah.
I can't think of the name of the huge complex.
Yeah.
But on the fringes of that, they, they developed over in there. I was wondering if that, because, you know, they transformed that.
They have.
That's, that's a great spot now, that's great living. And it also, you know, for all the ball fields and the hockey thing, and I can't think of that.
I can't think of any of that.
Pizza bag that, you know, I mean, that made that, that area a great area.
Yeah.
Where it was pretty much substandard for a while. But they had that outside development.
Okay, so here's one last, this is the last, like, out of the box thinking that came up today that I know, we were talking about it with the preservationists, the Preservation Society, and they started talking about the history of Buchanan and there being a time when almost every street in town had some sort of little shop. You know, some little grocery or coffee shop or tailor or something. And when we were talking with, with the North Side residents this morning, they're the ones that actually initiated the idea. One lady said, it would be nice to have a barber shop in the neighborhood, but we don't wanna a lot, we don't want a lot of traffic. And it's like, well, okay, you could limit it, in zoning, you can limit it to two or three chairs. You know, you can say it's not a, it's not for the city, it's for the neighborhood, essentially.
Well, you could limit the parking.
You can limit the parking, yeah, there's all sorts of tools.
And if you allow that in the neighborhood, it, it, you could have, I mean, you could have them in walking distance and they wouldn't get filled up because there'd be another.
People from walking, exactly right. So, the question is for the residents of Buchanan, would that be, would they consider that an asset or a threat to their homes?
Well, no. Don't we allow, there's a lot of.
In some districts, but not in others, not, not in your.
It's on some of the corridors, I know, right, but not in town, probably.
Just not in your single family residential zone?
Well, part of the question is also not just home occupation in the sense where you would never notice it, but home occupation in the sense where maybe somebody does do a small addition to their house so that they can have a wing in their house that they can have their accounting office in with one employee. You know, that kind of thing. Like it's, it's like this expanded version of what you currently have.
Right.
It's a little bit more presence, but still very limited in terms of, you know, you don't just open it up for like auto mechanics and stuff like that. But, but you have, you have a limited sort of list of permitted uses or not, I don't know, prohibited uses or whatever.
Right.
And, and there's limitations on how it can impact like the massing of the homes, so it doesn't just become this enormous.
Well, that's what I was, I was trying to think as if I would live down, I mean, I live in a neighborhood where the houses are a little bit spread out, so I, I'm trying to think what that would look like on Detroit Street where the houses are a lot closer and how I would feel about having a business right across the street or a nice store and learn what kind of an impact that would have on.
Well, growing up here, you know, there, there was a little corner grocery store type thing, you know, where you could, you know, within the neighborhood, you could go buy the essentials that you needed. And every area of town had one. I mean, I, I know, you know, the north end, I know where we lived, you know, west of town here, the center of town. So, yeah, these, those little areas, you know, would probably be something that would, the neighborhoods would respond to, you know, that type of environment.
And I think today's environment would a lot, would, would go along with that too. I mean, a lot of people are working remote, a lot of people aren't running into the office anymore. So I mean, I think, I feel like we would be moving along within the 21st century, I mean, a lot of that.
Yeah. And you guys are so innovative, like with your manufacturing shift and the way you're rebuilding your downtown. You know, it really fits with the culture that you're developing here to be innovative.
You wanna be business friendly, you wanna be open to entrepreneurs, so I think that makes sense to apply that.
Yeah.
As long as it's done in a way that wouldn't change the basic of the neighborhood.
Okay, so then here's one last question. And that has to do with your industrial zones. So you have this heavy industry and you have light industry. And in the United, well, first of all, we can't tell what's mapped as what, because they're all the same color, but.
That map is a, it's a work.
That's a problem. And secondly, when I look at your list of heavy manufacturing uses, they're pretty noxious uses there. And when we went on a tour of some of these areas, you know, the, the one out on Post Road, it's just before there, but anyway, it wraps around like this residential area. Yeah, and just thinking about how those residents must feel to be completely. Yeah, it's out there, right. But the prob, so those are all decent industry, they're all what I would call light industry warehousing. But it's zoned potentially for heavy industry, and what if you were one of those residents? So I think of you all as representatives of your community. And what we're seeing, we work a lot in industrial zones in our work. And what we're seeing, unfortunately for other places, and probably good for the US, is we've offshored most of those noxious industries, they're all in Asia. And so keeping that zone as a placeholder, hoping that someday you're gonna get a, you know, smelting plant, I think that's not gonna happen. So what I would like to say, just as a best practice, would you consider just having one industrial zone that is more? No, more light industrial. Get rid of the heavy industrial, cause I don't think you're gonna get it back. Yeah.
I don't know that I would want it.
That's the other side.
You're sitting in a heavy industrial area in Buchanan right now.
Right, right.
This was it?
Yeah. And I think that, you know, in a lot of ways, we're, we're paying for the fact that we had heavy industrial for so long. I mean, we're paying for that right now.
Yeah.
And like, out of control for a while, we'll clean it all up.
You don't want your grandkids to have to do it again.
Right.
Okay, so we'll consider consolidating and just giving you one. And one thing that we're seeing is, it, it kinda goes with your maker entrepreneurial spirit here is like artisanal manufacturing, which is, you know, building bicycles, like Shinola, or, you know, doing something more, it's still building, but, but it's at a different scale. We can write, we can write zoning, zoning for that. We would also like to recommend, especially for your grow houses, that we add performance standards that will help control odors, you know, and, and for, well, for all of your industrial, that there, there would be a series of performance standards like light, noise, heat, vibration.
Have you worked in any other campus communities, just curious?
No, I have, I've never written ordinance for it, but, um, I've studied it, and where I live in New Mexico, we just, uh, we've been medicinal for a long time, but recreational just was enabled or actually went into effect January 1st, so we're, I, I'm becoming quite exposed to it, but, um, haven't, haven't actually written the ordinance. But there are a lot of tools that have already been tested, especially places like the Pacific Northwest and Colorado, they've been writing for it for a while. Um, so I guess then a couple of last questions is, um, that your large undeveloped areas, we've talked about, you need a master plan to be able to zone that, but one thing we can write for you is essentially what acts like a floating zone. So it's a, it's like a PUD, a planned unit development, but you basically say, here's what the block structure has to be like, blocks can't be bigger than X and Y, and you have to have parks every so often, and, um, you know, it provides a diverse list of uses, which allows you to be creative with the master plan, but it's not suburban in, in character, it's, it would match the historic fabric of Buchanan. So we can write that for you, and then it's just sitting there, unmapped. And if somebody comes in and wants to do large-scale development, you can say, kind of, here are the rules. What people get nervous about, those large landowners, is where you try to say this applies to you, and you, you don't have a plan for it.
Wait, and we don't even have that many large ones, though, where?
We have a, a hair.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have, it depends on, I think everything's relative, right? So between Fourth Street and Moccasin, there's that open chunk of land, it's sort of mid-block that, you know, someday could easily be developed, and if you're not prepared for zoning tools, that could ease, make it easy for that person, or even incentivize that person to do it a certain way. You know, it could be done in a super inefficient way, and then you've lost one of your few opportunities for, for growth, you know? And the same is true for that commercial lot up at the north end, uh, by the A and P building. Um, you know, even this, you know, this River Street property, now the River Street property, you know, I think most people are thinking probably this is better for, um, you know, industry and these kinds of things, commercial maybe. But nonetheless, like, you know, you, you never know what's gonna happen, and you wanna be ready in case somebody wants to jump on, you know, subdivision, so to speak, a small subdivision in Buchanan. And so that's, I think, what the tool is for.
Yeah.
Is for those few incident, and I think it's especially critical when you don't have a lot of.
Right.
Because you wanna make really good use of it.
Right.
Yeah, and with your soil capacities and, you know, road maintenance issues that you've run into, you wanna make sure, when, when you look at new water sewer and road, you want to get the greatest return on investment for the municipality. So, if you have half-acre lots, you know, on, on a mile of road, you're, okay, let's say we have, uh, half-acre frontages, which is even bigger, on a mile of road. But, all I'm saying is, if you put in forty-foot lots as opposed to half-acre lots, you know, your ROI is exponentially higher. Um, as, as a local government, because long-term, you have to repair and upkeep the roads and the water sewers, so that's one way to look at it.
Yep.
Yeah, even, I mean, now, one question is also like how, how small-scale you wanna, maybe you can make those floating zones available, you know, because, I mean, this morning when we went by the feed nails site, and you were mentioning a five acres total, once you added up all that land. You know, that's, in a city of Buchanan, five acres is a big deal. So, you know, don't just leave it up to chance about how somebody's gonna subdivide that and make that work, you know, like, create a tool that makes that really efficient.
So then, I, the two big, like, large-scale questions, and I know I sort of started with this, uh, with your impression of the code, but, um, if you have any final thoughts on, um, landmines we should avoid? You know, what are the things that we shouldn't go there? Um, usually has to do with intensity of use, people just, and we've already talked about it, the large apartment buildings. Um, or what are things that would be your ideal outcomes, you know? How could, do you have any thoughts about how the coding update could be a really good experience or a really, or an unfortunate experience with the city? Usually the unfortunate experience is that it doesn't change anything. You know, it's just status quo, but.
The only, the only real concern that I have with our, with our zoning for entering now is enforcement. Which you probably hear all the time in every community.
Today, yeah, oh, yeah.
But that, that's my biggest concern with zoning, to be comfortable now, just right now, today.
So that's a whole different department.
I know.
And, um, the, and it's critical, because it's, as elected officials, it's, oh, well, and staff too, it's your credibility in the community has to do with, with enforcement.
Yeah, that was a big conversation today, in the North Side neighborhood, especially.
That they're hoping for a lot more zoning enforcement.
Zoning and property maintenance enforcement.
And that is, that's been a concern for a good number of years. I mean, you know, uh, because of the proximity of Clark, and then, you know, when people were brought here to work in Clark, it would have come in. Yeah, that was a, that was a big concern, and it still is, you know, years ago, in the early sixties, I think, you know, they did a, a repack in that area, but it's, you know, progressively gone downhill again, so, yeah. And I can understand, because there are a lot of people up there that, uh, take pride in their neighborhood, you know? So, um, and there's probably just as many or more that don't, so that's the problem.
Are there a lot of vacant properties that are not in the neighborhood?
Some.
There's, you know, it, there's a couple blighted properties, uh.
But no more than the rest of it.
I mean, from what I'm used to, it's not that, it's mild, but for Buchanan, it's still a problem, and we should, we wanna work on it, I know. But, uh, I see a lot of potential in that.
And, and the people who came this morning, they're, like you mentioned, um, they're the people that take pride in the neighborhood, and they really care deeply about it, and so, it matters to them.
There's pride in ownership.
Yeah.
There's quite a few, for sure, you know, up there, but that, that, like I said, that there are just maybe that many more that don't, and, you know, and that's, that's, uh, that's, wasn't always the situation, but, you know, it is steadily turned that way, and, and you understand. And I think as a commission, uh, you know, we've talked about, you know, the redevelopment and doing some stuff up there and getting it back to where it was, you know, good neighborhoods, so. Well, we talked about some idea, I mean, we're, we're improving the park. Listen, we wanna make it a, a really nice neighborhood park that will, that will pull up the neighborhood. And we'd like to encourage some new home construction. Get some, the phrase they use is a culture of maintenance, they want more people to open and take care of their property.
And I think if we can encourage some of those empty lots to get new homes built on them, then the people next door will wanna fix their house up, because they have a brand-new house right next door, and.
They, they were open to the idea of new homes being built, so.
What generation are you talking about? Are you talking about when Clark was here in the fifties?
We're talking about current residents.
And a generation comes down, and a generation comes down, they look at their ancestors and what they had, and why, why need to clean it up?
Yeah, our conversation today, normal, was with the current residents of the North Side.
As an entrepreneur, what do you guys see when you pull in here, are you, you have any comments about, yeah? Township residents?
Yeah, sometimes it's easier to be more objective when you're outside, you're starting. Yeah. Realistically, no, I, I definitely do feel about the issue.
A lot of people do want to move to the area, and I think your population's decreasing, or has it increased since?
I, I don't believe in decrease, I think estate's the.
It's been on the steady decline for a long time. And there isn't a more, a more, more.
I just found out with county equalization, it's heavily rolled back, but your village, which is a good and bad thing, but we increased our overall tax base by eleven million dollars over the last year.
So everyone's shocked after the.
I know, I'm not on the board.
That's us.
You, you say that, but it doesn't necessarily sound fair to taxpayers.
It is, because they're, they're gonna have a reduced village, we, because we were able to grow enough that we effectively can afford to reduce the tax village. I hope, the only person it's bad for is me, because now I have until tomorrow morning, after I leave here, to break the whole entire city budget, so.
We, we feel you.
Yeah.
We see that's our slush, you know, so.
Again.
Yeah, again. So, but, yeah, I would say, you know, I think the, the biggest issue I see with Buchanan is the roadways coming in are not welcoming. There's blighted properties coming into town in every single way. Except for your main street coming off of Baker Town, if you come in that way, but that's, no one comes that way.
Yeah.
So you come in Red Bud, there's nothing welcoming you, you have no idea that Buchanan's down the road, down Red Bud, there's, there's nothing.
There's shipping containers, there's tractors, and it's built full of industrial.
You go through the neighborhood from the railroad tracks to the downtown area, there's probably, I'd say, eight to ten houses that are, should be violated for zoning issues.
But that's for enforcement, I think, is what would be important.
But, you know, you've got, yeah, and that's a legal matter, and then it costs money, and we know all about that. But that's, that's what I see, it's like, you know.
Yeah, it, it can see the corridors, for sure, it will improve our reputation as a city as well.
But we have the same problem, we can't, there's no affordable housing for our people, and you can, create, everything's, like you said, four hundred thousand or an empty lot, four hundred thousand, so.
Or it should be just too much.
Yeah, or it should be too much.
For the long-term health of the community, to not be able, for a young family to not be able to afford to move into your community, that's, that's a serious problem.
That's a serious problem.
It's a very bad long-term problem to have. My previous community that I managed, we actually had, um, professors from Cornell University fly into our community to study our area, because we were statistically relevant demographically as one of the oldest per capita in the entire United States. So we suffered from that very severely, so to me, it's a very acute problem I wanna avoid here.
That's like one of the biggest problems in flippers. It drives me crazy. Does affordable house for.
But that has slowed down in town a little bit in the last couple of years.
It's not a buying.
No?
No, nothing, not at all.
I think it's the prospectors that are holding a lot of the properties that are buying cheap. I, I had to buy an old house for seventy thousand dollars and put the same amount of money into it to make it livable, you know, so.
But small, young families aren't looking for an apartment, I can tell you that. They want a house, they wanna live, they want a little piece, a slice of theirs.
I mean, that's what Courtney was saying, I mean, she wants, she wants to own a home.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what us as Americans, we all want.
Right.
Yeah. Want my own spot.
So I don't, and I don't think your residents want to see townhouse go up.
No, I don't either, I don't.
Maybe nobody.
That's why I think a small cottage thing, I think, would, would fly, but I, I don't see a total.
Yeah, and, and just as Courtney has her focus group of one, she showed her that concept, and she was like, yes, that would be amazing, I love that, so.
No, I love, I love where you guys are going, you guys have a huge task in front of you. That's why we wanna be hand-in-hand with you, and all, we appreciate it, we think. I mean, I feel for you guys, no one's done anything for a very long time, and now you're stuck.
Love that past year for you.
Yeah, but you guys are doing it, you're digging in, that's great.
Thank you.
It's amazing, thanks for your story.
How many mixed use do you have, Dr. Dr.?
We, I'm Front Street, how many mixed use? Uh, well, all right, so I can answer that. We have, um, most of the storefronts are occupied, there's a couple exceptions. Upper-story residential, I would say about half is occupied. Um, half is either cold storage or, um, not occupied or not ready to be occupied. It's actually a pretty typical place to be in right now. I think that a little incentive, you could push that cold storage to be occupied a hundred percent, you know, in a couple of years. My last community, I had a very similar dynamic, everybody wants them upstairs from downtown. You know, if you can provide the units, those are the first ones to go, you know?
Those won't likely be your family units, they're gonna want a house, because they have a privacy, but you're gonna target the younger people who are coming in, who are single or don't want kids, and have plans to have kids, because they, that gives them the urban feel, being above in a downtown, but it also continues with the small-town charm that Buchanan does. I mean, let's be honest, a lot of communities and suburbs wishing to have that, but you guys are in a very great spot to capitalize on all of that, so.
I've been up in several units, and they're so amazing.
I've done a lot of them, there's some really cool.
I mean.
The whole place is.
Totally upstairs, about a street shopping, that is like beautiful.
They did, they've done so much work up there.
Yeah.
And now, and we, there's still a lot of availability, you just need to fix that. So we've been discussing ways to, um, incentivize those people to fix up those upper-story residential's, in hopes of value.
Well, and it's happening in the whole town, I mean, you gotta remember, you know, the biggest vacant building on Front Street is in a full historic rehabilitation, exactly what we wanted, so. Retail and upper-story residential. What that's gonna signal to the market, that's what broke my last community open, is that big project, because the rest is just down. And so, and that's, that's what we have going for us. Can't wait till it's live.
So thank you, tell me to your guys' address.
Yeah, yes. So I got a que, I got a question, so I, oh, my house has two units in it, so, but currently for me, it's a mother and mother's house, but what happens to the non-compliant houses that, when you do change the code or change the ordinance? Mine has always, actually since the eighteen hundreds, been a multi-family house, and, and in one shape or form, from just single-family rooms to two units, to three units, to five units, to, to, to a tall, and so what happens to us that have that, when, if the, the, the rules change, does it get grandfathered in? Do we have to become compliant of some sort? Are there rules for us to become compliant, or are we no longer allowed to do that? I mean, how's that work?
Yeah, no, I think that the real, we use this a whole lot, the real easy, um, fix is to have a, have a line in the code that, you know, any unit that, um, existed prior to the date of adoption, um, is legally conforming. So you basically write it in that it's not legally non-conforming, it's legally conforming, uh, because of its, its history. You, as the, as the homeowner, would have to have some method of documentation, you know, that there was something prior to the date of adoption, so like right now, you go take photos of the second unit.
Oh, well, my, my house is in that historic zone.
Okay, so then you've got, oh, yeah, yeah. So then, so then you're covered, and that's the, that's the easy way not to permit more. But, you know, I, I actually think, like Mayor mentioned, that he's not queasy about, um, permitting that by right as long as the, the form of the building doesn't change. And maybe we say the building is over X square feet, so that we know it can, or that you're required to have X square feet per unit, so that if someone wanted to subdivide, you know, we're not gonna get micro-units. Um, that's another way to deal with it. I think we might need to be cautious about, like, the larger lot, more suburban, you know, the seventies and and sixties, seventies development, because most of those people bought into that lifestyle, style deliberately, and they don't necessarily wanna duplex next door. Um, so there are a few ways that we can do it, do you have any thoughts on that, Andrew?
No, I think, I think you do it based on the building type, like the way, I mean, like. like you say, certain building types from certain eras are more accepted today as being, becoming multifamily than others. And you wouldn't wanna create a situation where you suddenly go into a subdivision where everyone has expected single family lifestyle their whole lives and then enable, you know, a bunch of apartments.
Right.
And so you have to identify that based on building type and lot type, I think.
And another thing we could do to take it even a step further, we did this working in Highland Park, Michigan, is where they were trying to make housing more affordable because of their, you know, uh, decline. And, um, one thing we did is, just like with the ADUs, we permitted the, the unit conversion, but once again, we required that the, the, the owner lived on site. So it keeps, it manages a lot of the problems you get with multifamily with, you know, noise and maintenance.
Can I ask one more about short-term housing? Um, cause there's a, the big hype of Airbnb's, and there's no real regulations in this town to do that. So is, does that fall into this as well as zoning certain places to where you can have it, but regulating that at the same time, because we do not wanna become New Buffalo, where nobody that lives here, yeah, yeah, but we still, you want to attract people to stay, but you, you know, so is that, does that fall into that, that type of zoning as well?
It's not as, that's a permitting issue, not a zoning issue, but you need an ordinance for that. And there's some best practices in how to manage it. But, yeah, I would say with your local economy, it's a, it's a looming issue. Because you can do it in single family, you can do it in duplex, you can do it in any zoning district, you can do it above the shops downtown. But, um, if you don't, because zoning doesn't regulate what's legally called tenure. So it doesn't talk about whether, it can't talk about whether a property is rental or purchase. Because that's a different scenario, and it gets into discrimination. So, um, because of that zoning can't talk about short-term rental, because it doesn't talk about rental. So you have to have an ordinance.
But you could maybe point us in the direction of some example.
Yeah, we can, yeah. And, I mean, one of your first goals is to figure out what you want. You wanna permit some, but not all, you know, and the administration of that gets a little tricky because how do you cap it, you know, how do you administer that, because caps are hard to administer.
Cause that's, the, the, the sweet shop is beautiful, but it's all Airbnb's now, so there's three families that can't live there because of that, but we need them to be full, to bring people in at the same time, so we have to have some sort of regulation for that.
Yeah.
And to allow it, potential investors would love to see that, and there's no written law about how it's something they aspire to see away from. Yeah, yeah.
Susan, you wanna maybe ask a little bit about that comment you mentioned earlier a couple times that has to do with the current simplicity of the code?
Yeah, so, your code is really shockingly elegant in its simplicity. It was, it's very unusual for that era. Um, it only regulates what it has to. No, it only, it stays out of all the weeds, you know? Codes now get incredibly complicated, and, and electeds and their attorneys get nervous about anything that might possibly ever happen, and so they regulate everything. And, but then that gives you no flexibility in being business friendly. So, um, it regulates building height, yard sizes, um, uses, and parking, and some, a little bit about landscaping and a little bit about signage. By the way, we have to rewrite your sign code because of problems, but, um.
We know.
Uh, yeah. But, um, I would encourage you, because, because currently, right now, here's the deal. It gives, because it's silent on so many things, it gives you room to interpret it in a way that's appropriate to the character of Buchanan. That can be a problem because you can lose litigation.
Well, I was gonna say, oh, I, I can already see, yeah, because we get people who say, you're only gonna allow what you're gonna allow you insiders in City Hall, and we can't do what we wanna do, I mean, we hear that all the time.
Yeah. So the, the balance is between simplicity and, uh, defense, legal defensibility. And then also the balances between two other things, predictability and flexibility. So, you know, it's like a, a straight line, it's not a bell curve, and you wanna be somewhere right in the middle, but it's tricky to get there.
And equal treatment too.
Yeah, equal treatment, that you don't have to be an insider to navigate it. So one, one tool we use is the administrative flexibility part, or administrative waiver, where if it's within a certain parameter, uh, RICH can permit it if it's in compliance with the code. And we, we strongly recommend that, it's a great tool. The other, the other thing is, we'll try to, another best practice nowadays are illustrations. So we'll put in tables and graphs, and, I mean, not graphs, tables and illustrations that show what the regulations look like. So people will be able to picture it, and then when we bring that to you, you'll say, oh, oh, no, this is too much, you know? Or, this is not quite enough. Um, so it just helps, most folks aren't used to translating zoning into visuals.
The visual helps so many people.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, obviously, I'm in the sign industry, and, and so I look through code all the time in different communities when I'm getting ready to do signs, and some of them are super easy to look at, and they make it even easier when they show a building and they show the size of the sign and where it's allowed to be, where it's not allowed to be. I mean, it makes it super simple to draw, what you're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
Exactly, so that's the way we did the sign.
Can you remember offhand a community that has a good sign?
South, South Bend, I don't like the way it's written, but it's easy to understand.
Okay.
And then, so I think it would, yeah.
Good visual signs.
And they just redid those last year, so it's made it very up to date.
So, um, so we'll do things like, we'll do, do simple landscaping, simple fencing, simple, as simple as possible and as flexible as possible signage that complies with Reed versus Gilbert. And, um, and, uh, then a, a floating zone for, you know, five acres and larger, or whatever it turns out to be. And then, uh, we'll try to simplify your zoning districts a little bit, because right now, some of them are duplicative and, um, some of them are unmapped. So for example, the, the multifamily neighborhood commercial consolidation, I think that, that it's a good starting point. People may react to it negatively, and then we can take it back apart, but at least we can start with the best scenario. I don't know, anything else on that simplification?
No, I think, I think it's like that, just go through everything that was discussed today.
Yeah.
So it's been called a lot of things, I don't, it's elegant.
No, there is an elegance about, about getting into weeds.
That's what brought it on the last year, just the, the word elegant, you should never use, re-scribe words.
Form of the word, the word. Yes. No, I'm not talking about visually elegant, I mean elegant, I'm talking about, you know.
I understand what you mean, though, that was a good conversation we had about the simplicity of a discretion.
Yeah. So do you, and this is a, off, off, should be an off the record conversation, but do you guys get, as electeds, do you get leverage from your community to try to sway your, um, vote on things? Does that happen?
To be able to.
Are people lobbying you guys to go certain?
Do people lie in a way, like, come in, come in with the game, make sure you do this, make sure you do that? I'll chip into your next campaign if you, if you care.
That's fine. Yes.
That are, who are yours.
Yeah. So if there are things that, that you know that the community wants, that you also support, and think are best for the community, if you could, you know, consider those things and, um, share them while we're drafting, then, you know, we can, we can get ahead of the curve on that.
Could we have a public hearing?
You will have a public hearing, you will. You have to.
So we'll talk to us.
We're just gathering information right now, we haven't actually started.
We don't have anything to hear yet.
I'm listening.
Yeah, no, what I mean is, you can't have a hearing until you have a draft, and we haven't started writing.
So is this gonna be available not in computer form? I'm, I'm a computer literate, but I mean, I have Norma and some other people that would love to see this very readily accessible, where she can sit down and read it and look at it, uh, is that gonna be available for them as well?
Yes, absolutely, we've been working internally to try to better improve our communications publicly, have a public engagement plan, part of which is gonna start being having public copies of things available at the library, at the senior center, various locations of the folk, as well as at City Hall, so people can easily access them, even if they're not online.
This will be on, the draft will be online, I expect.
It, it will, yeah, we'll have it online, but do you mind with many paper copies spread out for now?
Thank you very much for the help.
It's gonna be your next award, the most elegant zoning in America.
I like that.
You got a positive for Norma, good job.
Is that an achievement?
That's great.
Yes.
I'm Northie.
Well, I appreciate you coming for a luncheon here. You don't have any ties to this area, do you?
I do not, I've worked in Michigan a fair amount, but, um, like in Detroit Metro, and Kalamazoo, and Marquette, you know, other, other corners of the state, but not here. I went to college in Indiana.
How are you?
No, false thing.
Uh, nice.
Oh, really? Yep.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for coming.
Now among you. We just went to this.
I'm going to.